October 23rd, 2020. Special meeting of the Planning Commission Committee as a whole. The committee allows for more detailed conversation, exploration of issues. This committee, like the Planning Commission, will likely operate in a virtual environment through the fall. I would like to ask for your patience as we use this platform for a public meeting. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have issues with the technology, please send a message to the moderator. There is one discussion item on our agenda today. There are at least 15 members of the public joining us today to speak, and I would ask everyone to be respectful of our time and ask that comments not be repetitive. If you would like to speak, please send a message to the moderator. The item for today's discussion is rezoning Z-1320 Downtown South. First, we will hear a presentation from staff, followed by a present state presentation from stormwater staff, and then we'll hear from the applicant and then from the public. For the public comment, I would like to start with those folks that were signed up to speak at yesterday's meeting. And I apologize for the long wait to speak, and thank you for your willingness to participate. I ask commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of the presentations and any public comments, and I would ask each commissioner to be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. Can you all hear me okay? I'm getting half and half, okay? I'm gonna get really close to my laptop. Let me know if you have any trouble hearing me. Do I need to repeat any of that? Commissioner O'Haver.
Yes, I need to recuse myself from this conversation.
Okay. We, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We should, we still have quorum, so thank you for that.
All right, thank you.
All right. Matthew Clem will present, I think, on behalf of city staff.
It's actually gonna be me, John Anagost, today. Matthew Clem is out of the office, but happy to be here. So yes, this is zoning case Z-1320, also known as Downtown South. Request rezone 39 parcels totaling about 145 acres near the intersection of Interstate 40 and South Saunders Street. The existing zoning for those parcels, as you can see in this map, is primarily industrial mixed-use with a four-story height. There is a very small portion of residential six at the north end of the site and another area of heavy industrial in the southeast corner behind the Bain Water Treatment Plant. The requested zoning is a mixture of commercial mixed-use districts, between 40-story districts and a 20-story district, and some of those have the urban limited frontage, and they all share a common set of positions. In the areas close to Interstate 40, the special highway overlay district two is retained from the existing zoning. This is a summary of the height limit that by either the requested zoning district or the zoning conditions. We'll get into more detail about the height limit set by zoning conditions, and this map is here as a resource for conversation later during this meeting. But generally, the request is for 40 stories on the west side of South Saunders Street, as well as the northeast corner of South Saunders and I-40, and then the lower 20-story portion is north of that east side, south of Maywood Avenue. Here you can see that a little closer, and that additional height guidance from the conditions is taking it down from 20 to 12 in that northernmost portion. And then in the southwest portion of the site, another zoning condition reducing the allowed height to 12 stories from the general 40-story height in that area. This is the aerial view of the area, so large portions of it are wooded, particularly on the west side. You can see Walnut Creek passing through the site. That's the blue line coming from the northwest, coming close to Interstate 40 and then passing back to the north before passing to the east. And there is some development on the northeast portion of the site, which is mainly a warehouse character development. This is the street view from the northeast corner of the site, looking to the south. So this is the Maywood neighborhood. This is looking towards South Saunders from that same portion of the site, a little bit south of the previous image. And this is close to the Bain Water Treatment Plant, looking from back in towards the previous image from South Saunders, northeast portion of the site again. This is the northwest portion of the site. So this is over towards Lake Wheeler Road and towards the farmer's market. And if you continue down the street and you see leaving this image towards the top left, you would get to the Carol Lee Mills condominium. This is the southwest part of the site, so this is just off of South Saunders on Carolina Pine. The zoning conditions cover a fair amount of topics. The first of which is restricting uses, not many uses prohibited, pretty much prisons and vehicle repair, and then gasoline sales, although it does appear that that condition is worded to allow electric vehicle fuel sale or distribution. In the northeast portion of the site, there is a limit on the amount of standalone retail close to the Maywood neighborhood. So essentially, the amount of retail has a fair footage cap or a percentage of the building's fair footage cap, and may only be provided in a building that contains other units. The third condition deals with the maximum height. And so in the area close to Maywood, again, you can see that the requested district is 20 stories, but there's a maximum height of 12 stories, and that applies behind the neighborhood transition area. So because it's an excuse request adjacent to a residential six district, there would be neighborhood transition requirements of a 50-foot building setback and then a height step up from that point. And so behind those two areas, the height then transitions to 12 stories and then to 20 stories. Here's the image from the zoning code of what that neighborhood transition was for. Similar condition controlling height towards Maywood near Lake Wheeler, so transitioning down to 20 stories on the south side of Maywood. And then on the southwest portion of the site, near Granite Street and Carolina Pines Avenue, again stepping down to 12 stories. The fourth condition has to do with public amenities. So this basically says that by the time the thousandth residential unit receives its certificate of occupancy, all three of these amenities must be provided. And so that's two access points to the Walnut Creek Greenway Trail, which passes through the site, two public art installations, and an acre and a half of outdoor recreation area including the following items. And those areas would be required to be open to the public during daylight hours. A similar condition for the, before the development can reach 1,700 residential units controlled by certificate of occupancy, and that is an additional acre of outdoor recreation, which must include three of the items on the list shown there. This condition is intended to increase the stormwater control measures for the site, and the way that it does that is by specifying a certain number of inches of rainfall which must be treated. And I think the stormwater presentation will have a little bit more information about that. This condition also requires some green stormwater infrastructure be used beneath that requirement. It does specify particular types of green stormwater infrastructure and that there will be markers indicating what those facilities do for public knowledge. Seventh condition has to do with the maximum amount of development in this northwest portion of the site. So this is north of Interstate 40 and west of South Saunders Street, setting a cap on office, resale, and residential. Outside of those three uses, as defined in Chapter 6 of the zoning code, additional uses could be established, establish an excess of those numbers as the code states, or as the condition states. Those caps are increased by 50% if the development is able to achieve a point of access from both South Saunders and Maywood Avenue. So that's contingent on the two points of access being able to increase that entitlement. Similar condition for the southwest portion, capping commercial office and residential. And then if there are, this is slightly different from the previous condition, if there are at least two access points from Carolina Pines and South Saunders, then that cap on entitlement may be increased by 50%. So that would mean a total of four access points for this area. Here's the entitlement breakdown for the existing zoning and the proposed zoning. So you can see a fairly significant, nearly tenfold increase in the development potential. This area is considered walkable. Currently, I think the street level experience would point in a different direction, but from a numerical calculation from the WalkScore organization, does score fairly well on walking, biking, and transit. There is transit service available, and the Walnut Creek Greenway Trail does pass through. So that does help walking, biking, and transit use. Here are the transit routes that currently serve the area. So you can see there's a route on Maywood Avenue that passes towards downtown, and that also, there is another route on Carolina Pine. So there would be standard bus service at the north and south ends of the site. Additionally, bus rapid transit is planned to come through this area to garner. In terms of housing, of course, this would add to the supply of, excuse me, of housing in general. It would not require any subsidized affordable housing units, but it would allow all housing types as defined in the code. The future land use map in this area is mixed between the regional mixed-use designation, north of Interstate 40 with a small portion of office and residential mixed-use, very northern portion of the site. And so the request is consistent with that regional mixed-use designation. Community mixed-use, excuse me, the commercial mixed-use district has a very similar set of uses allowed, and the allowed height is similar. The office, research, and development designation in the southwest portion of the site does not support the CX district or the height that reflects the 40 stories. And so that portion of the future land use map is pretty completely inconsistent. The urban form map here shows a parkway corridor on Interstate 40, which is supported by the requested special highway overlay district. And then there is a transit-oriented district and transit epicity corridor on the eastern side of the site reflecting the planned bus rapid transit purpose. And so the requested urban limited frontage for the majority of the site would support the walkable and pedestrian-friendly urban form that's desired in a transit-oriented area. Overall, the request is evaluated as consistent with the comprehensive plan, inconsistent with the future land use map described for, and consistent with the urban form map. The consistent policies are largely related to walkable active uses and additional density in areas that have good multi-rail transportation network. And the inconsistent policies have to do with the future land use map and the potential for a significant increase in traffic volume, which at this time has not been a traffic impact analysis for this rezoning request to identify potential mitigation for that increase in trip volume. There are a couple of minor issues with the conditions that we have working on correcting, and your deadline for making a recommendation is January 11th of 2021. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, John. I would like to move next to staff presentation on stormwater.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Ben Brown with the city stormwater staff. I will be going over some high-level things about stormwater and some things we've got in the process now. So I'll start sharing my screen, see how this goes. Is everyone seeing the presentation?
Yes, we can see it now.
Okay.
We, there you go.
Okay. All right, so basically, for a case like this or any rezoning case, I mean, ideally for stormwater, the goal would be to exactly tell kind of what all the impacts would be with this rezoning. And staff is currently working towards that for the entire city with our stormwater master planning process, but that, like, we are in the early stages of that. But for now, we're looking to apply some innovative practices, and we have some things in process change, like right now, that can kind of help that along. And I'm kind of gonna go through a few of those. So kind of on our agenda is talk a little bit about GSI or green stormwater infrastructure, some floodplain changes that we've got currently in process now, some ordinance changes, and a specific discussion of this case. So basically, real quick primer, I'm sure I'll say a few more of these, I even listed here. But GSI, like I said, is green stormwater infrastructure, and you also hear this referred to as low-impact development. They're used interchangeably but don't mean the same thing. The GSI term is more stormwater-specific. You'll hear talk of stormwater control measures, and they're referred to as SCMs. And then when we get to the flood portion, if you hear me refer to FEMA maps or flood maps, they're the Federal Emergency Management Agency has purview over our flood program. So that's why we refer to them as the FEMA flood maps. So the vision for advancing kind of GSI in Raleigh's got many benefits to, first and foremost, to take away the stress and pollution to our streams, and what kind of innovative practices we can use. And it's really a principle based on manage the stormwater where it falls. We're working towards, through our Stormwater Commission, to kind of make Raleigh a more GSI-friendly city, to kind of put GSI on like a developer's menu and make it more of a business-as-usual. Right now, it's used sporadically, but it is increasing. And it is a fairly new idea, for lack of a better word, in the stormwater realm. And GSI explained, it's all about kind of what the rainfall's happening. And this graphic is kind of small, I apologize, in the virtual environment. But it's essentially the different circle graphs here are taking you through the amount of infiltration versus the amount of stormwater running off a site and comparing that to how much stormwater just evaporates. In the first, top-left, is a more of a forested condition. You've got the red portion of the circle, the majority of that is infiltrating. And so that water is not even getting to the stream via runoff. It's going to the groundwater recharge. For the 10% to 20% impervious site, you can see that runoff pipe piece is getting a little bit bigger. That means more is running off to your streams and lakes, and less is kind of infiltrating in the ground. For a 35%, 50% impervious surface, it gets to be more of like even thirds there of runoff and infiltration and the evaporation. And then for high-density, 75% to 100% impervious surface, that's when your runoff gets the lion's share of that circle compared to the infiltration. Because the more hard surface you put on the ground, the less is going to soak in through the ground. And these are just a few examples of what we can see by more runoff going to our streams and lakes as opposed to soaking in through the ground and to the groundwater. You can get severe streambank erosion, which is common in an urban setting, where you'll see the high rates of stormwater kind of making these banks more vertical. And then it'll also lead to some increased flooding. This is flooding one of our greenway structures during a higher event. And obviously, this is a lot of water going through there. So what GSI is looking to do is to reduce that stormwater runoff pipe piece. Essentially, you're looking to go back and mimic that first pipe piece that was for the forested condition for the runoff and the infiltration and the evapotranspiration. And what that means is you're trying to mimic nature, like, you're trying to mimic kind of what that forested condition would do. And essentially, create that stormwater runoff where it falls and not let it go down to like a larger stormwater pond device that we're used to seeing, where you've got one big pond on-site that's collecting all your stormwater runoff and kind of concentrating it there. This is more about treating stormwater throughout the site, not just in that low spot where nobody looks at. So how much of this water is being treated? Well, based on the numbers and the design, it's going to treat that dirtiest or first flush of runoff. That's right around an inch and a half. That's where most of your pollutants lie, and that's where over 90% of our storms or rainfall events occur under an inch and a half. So you're infiltrating that rainwater to the groundwater, and that eventually does kind of recharge your streams, but it doesn't do it through the overland flow. And your rainfall or your rainwater is essentially staying on-site, for lack of a better term. Whereas our current stormwater regulations for like water quality treatment and rate of runoff treatment are all about catching and releasing stormwater. Like, releasing at the low point of your site, but you're treating it. I mean, you're treating it for water quality, and you're retaining that rate of runoff to your predeveloped conditions. But the GSI is more looking at, you're taking that runoff and you're infiltrating it into the ground. It's not leaving your site, for lack of a better term. And it does coexist with existing site landscaping fairly well. It's not that huge, large stormwater pond that's lurking behind a building somewhere or anything like that. It's something you can make into an amended for your site, that sort of thing. But the one thing I do want to kind of emphasize, while 90% of Raleigh's rainfall events are less than an inch and a half, we do get storms that are above an inch and a half. We've all been through some hurricanes and some summer thunderstorms and even some spring and fall thunderstorms that kind of generate that more than an inch and a half. The GSI controls will not control for those larger rainfall storms. Now, they will take a piece out of those storms and reduce that runoff some, but it's not going to take care of all that water like it does for the inch-and-a-half storm. These are a couple of examples of what these GSI devices or infiltration devices can look like. You've got, you've left here a green roof. You can do a bioswale area inside existing right-of-way of like a street here. This is a curb kind of cut out and bump out. You've got, in the right-side picture, it's more of a traditional birotention area, but it's in a parking lot or in some sort of amended area. And then this is just more of a natural kind of area that's a bioswale or the permeable pavement, things like that. So from like a GSI standpoint, that's kind of our most innovative practice that we're leaning towards now that the stormwater staff and the stormwater commission has put a lot of work into to kind of further this. Now, from the floodplain, the site is adjacent to some FEMA floodplain. And on September 15th of this year, the city council authorized staff to begin the ordinance change process for changes to our current floodplain regulations. And now staff is working with city attorney's office and with planning staff to prep that ordinance language to bring it to the planning commission. We're targeting December, January timeframe to kind of do that. And part of that is we want to do a significant community outreach push. I mean, we want to get the word out and get it out to anyone and everyone. And even if you don't want to hear about it, we want to get it out to you. And kind of where this came from is after Hurricane Florence, the city council had asked staff to investigate with the help of Stormwater Management Commission, strengthening our floodplain regs. And the Stormwater Management Commission formed a stakeholder group and for nine months kind of batted around just ideas as far as what they wanted to do as far as strengthening those regulations. And it was a fairly broad stakeholder group of property owners, commercial businesses in interest, floodplain engineers, environmental scientists, state floodplain people, and to kind of come to some sort of consensus. And they did, and they sent five recommendations back to the city council to change our current regulations, which are right now, you can fill 50% of the floodway fringe on your property today, which is the outermost portion of the floodplain that you'll see. So you can fill up to 30% of that area. And for residential structures, those finished floors that are in that area have to be elevated two feet above the hundred-year storm elevation. And parcels that were smaller were exempted from these regs just because their size and not being able to comply. Now, the new changes that were recommended by the Stormwater Management Commission through that stakeholder group were to extend existing regulations restricting any new development in the floodway to the entire floodplain. So the floodway, this area in blue here that you see on the map, and this is our old standby floodplain kind of whipping coast of Crabtree Valley Mall. So the blue area behind the mall is the floodway, and the pinkish-purple area is the floodway fringe. So essentially, if the new text change passes, it would preclude any new development on parcels that are in the FEMA floodplain with, going around the placement of structures and that sort of thing. There are some items that are allowed in the FEMA floodway now that would be allowed in the floodway fringe. And these uses are here. The allowed uses are mainly ground-level uses that you're looking at because they're looking to keep you from putting any obstruction into that floodplain. So if the current text change as-is passes, would preclude any new structures going into the floodway fringe. Now, there's some exemptions and variances that I don't really want to get into now that are baked in to this order change, which you guys will see in a couple of months. But just, that's a very broad kind of overview of what that is. Now, for the Downtown South site, everywhere in yellow is the Downtown South property, and the blue and kind of pink-purplish areas are the floodplain through the site. So you can see kind of where those intersect. And so if the proposed changes applied to this site, any new structures would not be allowed in the blue and purple areas. Just to give you a sense of kind of the overall watershed of Walnut Creek, the city's got mainly three kind of large basins in it. One is the Noose, the East, Crabtree Creek kind of running through the middle, and then Walnut Creek running through the south part of it. This area is about 148 square miles of drainage area. And the basin starts in Cary. They've got about eight square miles, so they'd be referred to as the headwaters. And this site, being at 145 acres, would represent about 0.2% of the entire watershed. It's about halfway, kind of in the middle of this area for Raleigh city limits. So you could probably say it's about halfway through that watershed. So you could probably raise that, that to this point, it's about 0.5% of that watershed, conservatively. So potential zoning conditions that involve stormwater. I mean, one thing to keep in mind, it's, they need to be above and beyond the standard stormwater media compliance. What we're thinking from a staff standpoint is to treat all or some percentage of impervious service using GSI beyond our standard water quality requirements. Some sort of downstream study, looking at the impacts on Walnut Creek here, because... On a creek here because it is such a major watershed and a vital watershed to Raleigh. And from that analysis, we'd be looking for preferably no impacts or some sort of unusual. Impacts. And if those impacts are are. Are small, some way that they could be mitigated and to have some sort of uh. Condition in place for that. And then um. Uh. For the uh, floodplain order, no ordinance changes, they're they're uh. Could be conditioned in the in there to adhere to propose. The plain order ordinance changes that were recommended by SMAC and sent to uh, the tech change process by the city council. So um. From a stormwater staff standpoint, it would probably be best to stay away from specific. Conditions about specific stormwater treatment devices because. There's a large menu of devices out there that could. Treat for this imperfect surface using GSI. So just to kind of shoehorn aside into a certain. Uh, SCM or stormwater control measure would probably not be a um, great use of a zoning condition. But just quantifying that as some percentage of of the impervious that's going to be eventually proposed. Could be a way to go and. The um. The downstream look at the Walnut Creek would kind of show you what the impacts are. Taking and that would also be taken in 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 account that this is a FEMA floodplain and these areas are. Are currently flooding and that a site this small can't stop all flooding on Walnut Creek, but they can make sure that nothing gets any worse and maybe make it a little bit better. With that. Try to keep it quick because I know we have a long, a long agenda. Any questions for me?
Um, what I'd like to do if this makes sense and the commission is agreeable to it. Is to hold all questions until all presenters are finished. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. And I just wanted to note, um, you know, we appreciate this report that. Commissioners had requested some information to help us um. You know, better understand, fully understand how stormwater um, is dealt with in the city. And um, recognizing that that's a important um. Aspect of this project and that we've received a lot of feedback from the public with concerns about stormwater in this area. Thank you very much. Um, so now we will hear from the applicant.
Okay, um, I think there are three members of the applicant team who will be speaking, although more have signed up. Should they be needed? Um, so the first on the list is Bonner Gaylord.
Uh, actually, it'll be uh, it'll be Molly and then J and then me.
Alright, pardon me. Okay, so then Molly Stewart.
I'm here.
Alright.
Next slide, please. Great, thank you. So Molly Stewart, Morningstar Law Group, four two one Fayetteville Street. Um, and my my role here today is is to place this proposal in a planning. Context, kind of the larger framework of the city. Um, so what you have up on your screen is the city's growth framework map. And that map is designed to designate the primary areas for the city's growth in both households and jobs through the year twenty thirty. That bluish area that you see is called the downtown regional center. And that area uh, covers all of our existing downtown and expands that true downtown core area all the way down to I forty. Um, it starts to look a little bit marbled there, but the green that you see shows the green space and open areas um. That that will be woven throughout. That map also designates South Saunders Street uh, as an urban quarter and Wilmington Street as a frequent bus network. So the current zoning of the property included in this proposal is fairly out of line with this map. Uh, most of it is currently zoned for either three or four story industrial use. Um, some of it is is owned for residential use at six units to the acre. Um, so that existing zoning just. Doesn't support the city's plan for this part of town. Um, and to fulfill this vision requires rezoning. Next slide, please. So as noted in this description of the map that you just saw, yeah, this says that under current zoning. The expected growth could be accommodated, um, but it would result in a centerless and undifferentiated pattern of sprawling development. Now, when I read that language, I see, you know, a description of that dreaded Atlanta scenario. Um, where sprawling development is creating intense traffic issues throughout the city. And so permitting density in this area of the city, the expanded downtown area. Um, can both reduce the total amount of traffic that will be generated by the coming growth. And also protect the other parts of the city that would suffer that increased traffic. Next slide, please. So this is the description of that downtown regional center and it's described as the city's urban core. It's where the most intense growth and highest levels of transit, bicycle and pedestrian access are contemplated. Next slide. So under the current zoning, that plan for the area has not advanced and for roughly the past decade. Um, we see kind of a donut hole in that area, um, surrounded by growth in other parts of the city. Next slide, please. This is just a closer view of that proposed BRT corridor showing its overlap at the site. Next slide, please. So in addition to filling in that map of downtown, the proposal supports the city's goals. Corridor revitalization, mixed use development in the commercial corridors. And reinvestment in the city's gateways uh, explicitly including South Saunders Street. So it is true that this proposal covers a large area, um, but compared with the city's plan for expanding downtown. It it's it's really nowhere near being the only game in town or or even particularly dominant within the future footprint of downtown. The surrounding investments in transportation and parks. Will result in the expansion of downtown into this area. And there's some good reasons that this new section of downtown. Uh, should benefit from a relatively large project in its earliest stages. First of all, development of this size can provide the critical mass that we need. To support a true mixed use, walkable, bikeable, transit oriented, new part of downtown. Um, and smaller developments in the future can can plug into that already functioning network as the rest of downtown takes shape. As the city's downtown regional center, a project of this size can make room for truly regional destinations. Such as a stadium, but within downtown and in a lot of places, those are the types of uses that are found off of a highway exit somewhere. And finally, this project is large enough to truly partner with the public sector and build in a range of public benefits. Including affordable housing, including usable amenitized green space and and lots of others. Um, that conversation is going to be bigger than the zoning conversation. So the city has set some clear goals for this part of town. The proposed rezoning. Would be a significant step toward aligning that zoning with the goals for for both this downtown area and for the city as a whole. I'd like to turn the microphone over to Josie Reeves to tell us a little bit more about the project vision.
Alright, thanks Molly. Um, I'm Josie Reeves with Kane Realty Corporation. And excited to tell you a little bit about what we have done to date in terms of planning for downtown south. And just pass a vision with you about uh, what's guiding us uh, through this this work in this process. So if you go to the next slide, please. And the next, thank you. So this is a huge opportunity for us all to think together about a hundred and thirty five acres, just a mile from our urban core. And nearby, just hundreds of acres of park space. And we acknowledge that it's an opportunity. That many developers, much less many cities get. So we see as Raleigh grows, there's just a number of facts that are pulling. The downtown growth to the south. And a while back, as Molly mentioned, the city spent some time looking at the South Saunders corridor. And that study really made some good points about the lack of connectivity along this stretch. So. As you know, we also commissioned an independent ULI panel to review this opportunity as well. And the consensus simply put is just that this is a unique. Pocket of our city that's poised for growth and really deserves to be considered as our new southern gateway to Raleigh. Next slide. So if we zoom in, we've just very simply looked at these three pieces of property and labeled them A, B, and C for ease of conversation. So parcels A and B have a lot of natural topography and a lot of wetlands. And we've been studying ways that we could use and design these parcels uh, to an urban scale. We also spent some time imagining. Them as single campus or single user campus like settings. And then across South Saunders Street, parcel C is a fairly flat fifty five acres or so, and that's going to be the home to our first phase. Next slide, please. So while we are approaching our rezoning with you and one uh. In in sort of one effort, we are going to be building in phases and we've been concentrating a lot of our. Uh, development efforts on the consideration of a master plan for uh, phase or parcel C. And if you look at this draft site plan, uh, we're showing our current planned street grid. Uh, for phase one, we're approaching it in sort of a grid format fashion as this approach has really been shown over time to support. Uh, city scale and function well in an urban setting. And then as you're already very well aware, in purple and blue, we're showing you Walnut Creek in the wetlands that are. Running right through the heart of the the parcel, which is something that we've spent a lot of time thinking about. How we can really restore and integrate both into our plan. Next slide, please. So of course, what do we want this to feel like? Um, it should be very plainly and clearly said. That any work that we have done to date is not a model for what the vision we are casting for downtown south is going to be. So if we're doing our job well, we are contributing to and enhancing the identities of the individual districts of our city. It is not our intention to make them homogeneous or indistinguishable from one another. So we really do believe that the area's nature that's here, combined with the industrial history and the communities that surround us. Are defining elements that we want to embrace and build upon. So our goals are to incorporate housing options for all. Thoughtful architecture, the restoration of Walnut Creek and its wetlands. Innovative workplaces, public parks, public courts, public fields. Greenway enhancements and world-class sports and entertainment facilities. Next slide, please. So this is an early depiction of the plan and it starts really imagined for you how all of these uses might play out. And it should be said that phase one, it's our intention that it's significant in scale. You know, we're planning a couple of office buildings. A couple of residential buildings, uh, perhaps a couple of hotels. We're seeing a very active entry drive and active ground floor overall that's accessible to everybody with seventy five thousand square feet. Of retail and restaurant space. And again, that's all within phase one. So if everything goes according to plan, we'll be beginning construction late next year with phase one being completed in late twenty twenty three. So that's kind of a summary of what we've been up to as a group. And now I'd like to walk you through what's driving us and where we go from here. Next slide, please. So our objective is to create an authentic and impactful new district of Raleigh. And we see Raleigh at all the top of all the lists and we see that accolades aside. It's just true that we already have everything we need as a city to take our rightful place. Among America's best cities. So we already have the thinkers and the opportunities and the industries here. And so. The words out, no doubt, this is a great place to live and work and no bones about it, we're growing as a result. But we do think that we have the opportunity to ask ourselves as a city, how do we want to grow? And we don't want to grow for the sake of growth alone. We want to help Raleigh grow in a way that is smart and progressive. And so we really didn't overcomplicate our first step. We just asked, you know, we asked our neighbors, we asked community leaders, we asked industry experts. What can downtown south be and how do we get there? And so the answers and the feedback that we received that we asked for. Are really informing our thinking and they're leading us to four key tenants that we're letting guide our path. I'm going to walk you through each one. Uh, next slide, please. So tenant number one for us is create a district, not a development. So we know that developments can have a reputation for being overplanned and they can feel contrived. But districts are just naturally diverse. They're naturally creative. They offer a variety of experiences. Districts evolve with a city. So we are working with a housing affordability consultant. We are imagining open park spaces that are available to the public. We are envisioning culturally diverse arts and programming inclusions. We are supporting a local accelerator program that supports women and minority owned businesses. And we are integrating public wellness assets throughout the district. Next slide, please. Tenant number two is lean into nature. And so of course, you saw our our gritted out street plan and you saw the impact of Walnut Creek and its wetlands. Of course, we've always had a vision of integrating those assets into the role of this vision. But we could have never imagined how relevant open space would suddenly become. So downtown south is already built for the world that we're all now living in. This park-like setting that we're going to be able to uh, create here is. Providing us countless ways to lean into a new kind of urban placemaking. So we want to restore and protect Walnut Creek and its wetlands. And we want to create open parks and courts and fields for all ages that everyone can use. And we want to create opportunities for ecological education for our community and we want to employ green building practices. So we're not only going to work with nature, we are going to let it define us. Next slide, please. So tenant number three is to physically connect to the heart of downtown and surrounding communities. So if we're creating a true district, then we know that access for everyone must be physically woven into the fabric of our city. And so we're paying great attention right now to the infrastructure to ensure that we have a road system that grows with us. And we're supporting the city's transportation goals, including that bus rapid transit stop on Wilmington Street. And we're thinking of ways to grow and enhance Greenway Trail Network thoughts in partnership with Parks and Rec. And we're being thoughtful about walking, parking, biking, micro mobile and uh, in and around downtown south. Next slide, please. And the last tenant that's guiding us is the idea of partnering early, often and always. So if our goal is to work toward this authentic and impactful new district of Raleigh. We need strategic partners who are district level thinkers to join us at this table. So some of the partnerships that we've already engaged are shown here and we have begun this series of meetings to share our vision. And trade ideas and really grow downtown south into the story of a collective. So we've had conversations around headquarters projects, healthcare facilities, education. Um, whether that's lower school or uh, some of our um, community colleges and uh, levels beyond. Technology incubation and more. Next slide, please. So we really do believe that this downtown south district will be the center for innovation and creativity that Raleigh deserves to truly grow Raleigh together. And we're all in in this way of thinking. And so on behalf of all of our team and all of our partners, we thank you for the time and I will turn the microphone over to my colleague Bonner Gaylord. Is somebody able to unmute Bonner? Ira, are you able to unmute Bonner?
I think we're, this is Bynum Walter. I think we're having some technical difficulties and.
I'm I'm on now.
Oh, great.
Yes, great. Okay, well, uh, it's great to be uh, speaking with you all and thank you all for for your. The time you spend on everything and and as well as as this project and here today. Uh, so I I'd like to uh, to uh. Just start by walking. Uh so I I'd like to uh to uh just start by walking through how we got here and uh what the history of of this project is. Uh originally, a couple of years ago, Steve Malik, who's a owner of our our local professional soccer teams, approached uh approached John and said he wanted to do something significant for the city. And uh he wanted to do a downtown stadium uh to bring uh Major League Soccer to to downtown. And we started looking for a site and uh there's our 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 downtown proper is built out and there are very few sites that would be uh that would be able to host a stadium. And so uh we started to look around further and found the the Pinmark site that we're talking about today and and started to realize some of the incredible opportunities that that we have with that site. And so if we can go to the next slide. There we go. Uh so as you can see, one of the things that we realized in looking at the site right off the bat was the incredible connectivity, the spaghetti network of uh transit, infrastructure of roadways, of greenways and uh rail, as well as uh the future BRT line, which contemplates a BRT transit stop at the Downtown South site. So it one of the the early acknowledgements was the significant amount of connectivity and how this could create a southern gateway for our city. And then then we dug deeper and and we started to learn that the site wasn't uh didn't have a a all positive history and there was a lot of uh things that we needed to wrestle with as we were were approaching this project. We knew that there, we learned that there were significant stormwater impacts and that that there was significant flooding along the corridor. And so we've been talking with our uh professionals and with city staff and trying to determine the best way to approach stormwater. And we've also been talking with 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 the state and their engineers. And what what we're hearing, which is somewhat different than than what you hear on a lot of cases, is that uh yes, absolutely, there is flooding on this site. And the way of flooding in this corridor and the way that that, the reason that flooding occurs is because uh all of the culverts, the passageways underneath the roads to Cary, the Cary Walnut Creek, were put in a long time ago, uh well before Cary developed the level it had, before stormwater protections were in place. And uh with all the the development that's happened upstream, those culverts are no longer sized appropriately. So those culverts, uh established bottlenecks that uh that create a a series of bathtubs going down the the corridor with those culverts being the drains on the bathtubs. And so uh there there is a culvert on our site. However, if we were to go in and enlarge that that culvert, it would help issues upstream, but it would greatly exacerbate issues downstream. And the neighborhood, Rochester Heights, for example, would flood much more significantly if we were to to deal with that, to to do that. And we also learned that because of the proximity to the stream, uh with the actual severe flooding happens uh on the tail end of the rain events. And it's that wall of water that's coming from the headwaters up in Cary and 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 upstream that uh take a while to get into the stream such that the the act, the flooding occurs later in the rain event. And so in order for this site not to exacerbate flooding, we cannot uh do detention on the site. We cannot hold that water because if we held it and then released it, we would be releasing it during the flood, which would call it, make it worse. And so there is no detention allowed on this site uh based on uh staff and the state's uh analysis and uh because it would cause worse flooding. So what we we y'all are probably aware that stormwater comes down to quantity, which is about detention, and quality, which is about treatment. And we uh we we know that that we can't detain, so we cannot deal with with the quantity component. However, we significantly increased our standards for treatment and uh we, the city standard is one inch and we increased that to one point two five inches. And then later learned from staff that uh the the kind of magic number to approach there was that ninety percent storm that Ben mentioned earlier. And we have submitted conditions that uh that have that, exact number is one point three four, but our submitted conditions have uh uh commit to treating the first one point three four inches at that ninety percent storm. Because if we go over that, then it becomes, starts to become detention. If you're treating more and more and more water, it really then functions just like detention and would create worse flooding downstream. So we've worked with staff to in uh to to identify that that uh appropriate number of one point three four and have added that we were, will commit to including an array of GSI principles that you can see listed in our condition. Now those, we we picked those because those are are generally the ones that people lift up as having the greatest impact and and uh but we're absolutely not averse to exploring others if if that's a desire. So the other component that we learned about the site that is uh that is a very sad history of racial oppression in this area. And the neighborhoods in this area have been pushed around by the city, the state, and development interests for well over a hundred years. And that uh with that comes a responsibility uh for this site to to transition from one of of historical oppression to one of future equity. And we started to think about how we could deliver that equity. In order to determine what equity might look like, we started a citizen engagement process and uh to determine what it was that the neighborhood around the site and the neighborhoods historically impacted feel should should occur on this site. So uh next slide, please. So over the past year and a half plus, we've been uh reaching out and listening and uh learning from the community. It kicked off in August of twenty nineteen when a a group of subject matter experts from around the country came in and uh through the Urban Land Institute and uh did an analysis to spend a week interviewing over a hundred community stakeholders, neighbors, leaders, uh and and organization heads. And from that derived a a set of recommendations. And uh those recommendations were very broad and that that report has been published and and uh everyone is welcome to go check that out. And one of the components that that they talked about was, again, pursuing an equity fund. So we also, in our citizen engagement process, have had uh persistent one-on-one meetings and group meetings. We've said from the beginning that we'll talk with anyone anytime and we'll show up wherever that uh that were desired, and we've done so. We've been meeting with with community groups, as I said, we've been uh we've had our Neighborland as a local startup that uh does citizen engagement and did a phenomenal job of citizen engagement on the Dix Park Project. And we have have been working with them and had a survey online since January and that will persist through the project to get feedback from citizens. And we've gotten hundreds of individuals responded, thousands of pieces of feedback. Uh we also have uh have done not just our neighborhood meetings, but also hosted special public uh published town halls that dealt with environmental and stormwater impacts and transit and traffic impacts to learn what the the concerns might be. Uh next slide. So what we've learned through this entire engagement process is that there's a deep desire to deliver equity to this neighborhood through community benefits. And those benefits are are listed here. Uh the ones that that were persistent and rose to the top over and over again are substantial housing affordability, green stormwater infrastructure using GSI practices, including environmental education, open spark park spaces for all with public fields and courts, health facilities and health partnerships, incubation spaces for area businesses, that includes office, retail and restaurant, education partnerships and workforce development programming to support lifting up folks who who live in the neighborhood and building capacity within the area. Supporting minority and women-owned businesses has been a a large topic. Integrating wellness assets and enhancing our Greenway Trail system, multimodal transit and infrastructure improvements, including transit amenities, bike ped facilities and parking, uh public art and cultural attractions and entertainment and and lastly, of course, and entertainment and sports venues. And I'll say that while we started this process thinking about a venue for soccer, our vision has expanded greatly. And we feel that this can be a a hub for all of Raleigh. We all know that that Red Hat Amphitheater is a temporary installation that will be going away when the convention center expands and uh which which is uh forecasted to be about seven years. We all know that Walnut Creek Amphitheater causes uh significant traffic and other impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods. And we also know that our wonderful venues like PNC Arena are fantastic. At the same time, folks drive there and uh go to an event, go to a concert, and then they immediately leave. And so they 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 don't bring any economic impact to the surrounding neighborhoods and they don't stay. So they, the parking, the traffic impact is huge when uh everyone's all trying to leave at the same time. On the other hand, Downtown South will be a fully integrated mixed-use development district that's that's eminently walkable and connected to transit. So before and after events, people arrive early and dine and shop and they stay late and have a drink or ice cream. And that dissipates the traffic over a much longer period of time and brings economic impact to the immediate neighborhood. Next slide. So what what, when, to deliver all these benefits and to accomplish our greater vision of uh of building an entertainment and sports district, uh there, we need to pursue a way to accomplish that. And the way that's continually risen to the top is what the city's Equitable Development Around Transit Handbook draft calls an equity fund. And that equity fund is uh is contemplated as a fund that uses the increase in tax revenue generated by the development for community benefits. And that is, that is exactly describing uh the the legal instrument called a a tax increment grant, which would, which the key facts of of a tax increment grant to establish an equity fund are that a portion of the 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 city, the city's taxes will be dedicated to funding neighborhood improvements. So I think we all can ask ourselves, do we feel like this neighborhood has received uh its fair share of investment from the city? I think, I know I can answer that question, no. And if that's true, then the taxes that are generated by this site should be spent on this site and within the neighborhoods for the benefit of the neighborhoods that surround it. And so that's, that's where uh through that that uh equity fund, we're able to deliver on all of those community benefits. And the reason we're talking through that today is because it, we we, in order to accomplish those community benefits, which are are very expensive, there needs to be a way to get there. And the equity fund is how to get there. And it's a and an an innovative tool that's been used in other cities to do wonderful things like Downtown South and create equity in a neighborhood that that deserves it. And we feel like this is a a separate question for the the city. The city needs to answer, first of all, the question we have today, which is, is this land use reasonable in the public interest and consistent with the comp plan? That's, that's clear, the the question before you today. And the and and but what what gets kind of lost in that sometimes is reasonable and then the public interest. Who is the public? Because will it benefit the whole city? Absolutely. And once again, it gets to, if if this is going to benefit the whole city, then how is it also a win for the neighborhood? And how do we address some of the inequities of the past? And that that equity fund also uh creates no new taxes. It 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 is a a grant program whereby the the community benefits are reimbursed through a grant uh written by the city after the taxes are paid. And so the grants are dependent on the community benefits. And as such, it's it's not a risk to the city, the city, it doesn't put any financing on the city's books. And it it is a uh a a tried and true method for this type of public-private partnership. I think also another another component that's important to know is that with that equity fund, the investment and the benefits are concentrated in the neighborhood. It isn't taking those new taxes and spreading them across the rest of the city like like peanut butter, as is typically done. It's taking those new taxes and spending them in the neighborhood. Lastly, this this uh this will be governed by a formal agreement with the city and the county, who will guide and dictate those use of funds and will be able to administer those funds uh for the thirty-year timeline of the. So with that, I will uh open up for, happy to address any questions and I'm very grateful for y'all's time.
Thank you, um Mr. Gaylord and and for the whole team, Molly Stewart and Josie Reeves for that presentation. Um can everybody hear me okay? Okay, thanks. Um. So um now I would like to um move, uh let's see, to hearing from the public. So there are several members of the public uh that are at the meet, the meeting today who would like to provide comments. I would ask the moderator to introduce the speakers one at a time and to introduce those that were signed up for last night's meeting first. Commissioner Winters.
Forgive me, um I just also wanted to say of the five that signed up but weren't able to come back today, I just wanted to acknowledge um Andy Paddock, Brian Purdy, Wah Wong, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing your name, uh Chris Bass, Roland Adams, and Travis Fluid, uh the five that signed up yesterday but weren't able to speak and unable to come back today. So I just wanted to acknowledge um their presence yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Winters. And I would add that um we will have two special meetings dedicated to this zoning case today and also on the twenty-ninth of October. And we would invite them to come back and hope that that they are able to attend um perhaps on the twenty-ninth. And additionally, we have received a large number of emails. Um and we do read those and they are important to us. Um and we recognize them as an important part of the public process. And so uh we would encourage those folks to reach out to us by email if they can. Um additionally, we have been given their emails, so uh we may try to reach out to them individually. But thank you for that. Let's see, so um could the moderator introduce the first speaker for today?
Of course, um, I will take this time to say I have eight speakers, I believe, still on the line who have signed up previously. If anyone else who has joined the meeting has not either filled out the form or contacted me directly and wishes to speak, um, please do so in the chat and I we will try to get to you after we've gone through um the signup list. But the first speaker for now is Bob Geary.
Uh, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, I um I started clocking that presentation a few minutes in and I got it at thirty-five minutes. So I hope you will give members of the public some leeway and not hold us to a two-minute limit. Uh, there's there's so much to say about this application and I'm not really sure where to start because the fabulous project that Bonner just described is not in the rezoning application. If you know, if only it were. If only the things they are imagining, the things they are envisioning, the things they want to do were actually in the rezoning case. But instead, they are part of an imagined community benefits agreement that does not exist. There has been no legitimate negotiation toward a community benefits agreement with any community group capable of representing community interests. Bonner may imagine that such a thing should take place. I imagine that such a thing should take place. And the ULI report imagined that such a thing would take place, but it has not. And so it is now the job of the planning commission to look at what's on paper in the rezoning application and decide if it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and in the public interest. Staff has made a recommendation that it is, but you are, uh, it is your job to make an independent assessment of whether this is consistent with the community with the comprehensive plan and in the public interest. And I would ask that you notice as you make that assessment uh that this is on a BRT route, but there is no offered affordable housing at the BRT stop, none. Some may be imagined, Bonner may want to do that someday, Bonner may, Bonner and his group may not own this site someday. So that's not in the application, the soccer stadium is not in the application. This is definitely a very nifty site and a lot of great things could be built here, but the the rezoning application describes nothing specifically, simply asks for a forty story, a forty-story entitlement and says, trust us, we'll build whatever we want to build or we'll sell it to other people who will build what they want to build and it will fit within a forty-story envelope. That's really not the way uh planning is supposed to take place in 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 Raleigh. Uh, I would ask that you notice that the impacts on surrounding neighborhoods are potentially very severe and the offered uh stormwater condition is very limited and probably very inadequate. So that's something that takes will take deep analysis. I was really interested in Ben Brown's presentation on that subject. Uh, it's rich with possibilities. None of them are in this rezoning application. So I'm going to stop there, but there's so much to say about this. And the but the basic thing to say is the fabulous project that Bonner described that his group imagines is not in this application. And since it isn't, I don't see how this is consistent with any comprehensive plan analysis. Uh, also, you know, the forty-story entitlement is about twice what is the maximum potential on this site in the comp plan, so that's another factor. Uh, I read the staff report. There's a potential here for thirty-two thousand new housing units. That's a lot. A hundred and fifty thousand uh uh car trips a day, that's a lot. So how how will that be mitigated? Not addressed in this application at all. It I would I would also say there really is no reason to rezone that the sectors they're calling track A and track B, they have no plans for those. The only thing they have a plan for is track C. It's fifty-five acres. It would be a very significant rezoning all by itself. And I I think uh it would make good sense at this time to withdraw A and B. But the but the basic thing that needs to happen is that the developer needs to talk to the community, to people who represent community interests. I don't know that they'd ask for a soccer stadium. I think they might ask for a library. I think they might ask for other community benefits. I know they would ask for affordable housing and it's not in this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geary. We appreciate your comments.
Um, next we have Chris Bass.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chris Bass and I am the owner of Chris Bass Engineering and Ecological Engineering Company. I live and work in the Walnut Creek watershed and our company is actively involved in several several South Raleigh stormwater projects, including Rochester Heights. I have twenty years of experience in stormwater and stream restoration and am well recognized as an expert in this field. I am extremely concerned about the potential stormwater impacts of the proposed downtown south project. The current concept uh shows nothing but high-density development directly adjacent on top of and in the middle of the worst flooded areas in all of Raleigh. There are no advanced stormwater techniques that will be able to fully protect the public from these types of mega developments. The scale and proximity of this project to extremely sensitive areas will exceed the effectiveness of these methods and demands that additional requirements be put into place. I am pleased to hear and see that additional requirements are already under consideration and would like to thank Ben Brown for his leadership in this area. To help with this, our company has been working with Partners for Environmental Justice and experts at NC State to prepare and propose additional stormwater requirements that we think are needed to protect surrounding human and ecological communities. I believe these requirements are detailed, reasonable and proportional to the scale of what it what is being proposed and that they are ready for direct adoption. Based on what I have heard today, agreeing to them should not only be easy, but should be absolutely necessary for implementing tenant number two as described by the applicant. I have also heard a developer make incredible claims about the potential non-impacts of flooding that really should be delivered by an engineer. I suspect that an engineer would only make such statements after completing a very detailed modeling and analysis study. How can we possibly know that undetained runoff generated by this development won't flood Rochester Heights all by itself and still be sitting there when the water and runoff from Cary arrives and makes it worse? I sincerely hope that this group will not make a decision based on comments that are not backed up by reviewed technical documents. It is my strongest recommendation that the requirements we propose be included as part of any potential rezoning agreement. Adopting them now is our only chance to secure that a convincing level of study and protections be implemented. Once the rezoning has been approved, it will be too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Uh, next we have next we have John Reese.
John Reese.
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. My name is John Reese and I'm speaking as a representative of Interfaith Creation Care of the Triangle, a network of sixty-five diverse faith communities. The downtown south project offers many exciting opportunities. However, it could increase flooding, traffic, property taxes and displacement of individual homeowners in the predominantly African-American neighborhoods nearby. We urge that you only if this rezoning with these restrictions, effective low-impact development, at least twenty percent affordable housing, protection from property tax increases for elderly and long-term residents, a binding community benefits agreement developed in conjunction with southeast Raleigh residents, a firm commitment by the developer that stormwater runoff will not increase in downstream communities. There are many choices available to reduce the ecological footprint of this project, such as net zero energy, passive solar design and green roofs. We ask that you encourage the developer to make sustainable building choices and that you provide him incentives to do so. Kane Realty is promoting downtown south as a transformative project. It will be truly transformative. It it is sustainable and racially just. On a personal note, I live in recently completed development in North Raleigh. At great expense, the developer installed two ponds to prevent downstream flooding, passing the cost to the homeowners. Similarly, I would expect Kane Realty to bear the cost of stormwater mitigation for this project. Thank you, and you can see the full text of this statement in the Interfaith Creation Care letter from Bullock Isle.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
Uh, next we have Carmen Coffin. Carmen, we're getting your presentation queued up.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am speaking on behalf of a very loosely uh put-together community engagement strategy sessions group created last summer. And um I'm also speaking on behalf of Partners for Environmental Justice. Um. Our concern is community engagement at this particular juncture. Uh, we keep hearing from Bonner Gaylord and Kane Realty about the amount of community engagement that there has been. We know that in the ULI process, and you can go to the next slide, sorry, um, we know that in the ULI process that they spoke to about a hundred individuals. I don't know how many of those individuals actually live in southeast Raleigh or near the area that is being discussed. Um, I know that the Neighborland online survey has been taken care of, but I don't know how many people who actually knew about that survey. There were small virtual meetings. I have been to three of those. I know that that several people have been involved in one-on-one coffees or conversations. One of the things that Bonner said earlier in one of the other meetings was that they were working on building partnerships with the right people, the right industries, and they were keeping their boots on the ground and thinking about conversations they needed to have at the local, regional and state levels. But some of the right people are not people who are elected or have been elected officials or own large businesses. They are people who have home businesses whose homes would be affected by flooding, whose businesses would be affected by flooding. I don't know if any of those people who are not the right people have been contacted. Uh, the people that I have been talking to have not heard anything about downtown south and they don't know what Z dash thirteen dash twenty is. Um, if you'll skip to the um the next slide, um, as has been said, we don't know what parcels A and B are. Um, and so there's no way for you to determine how it's okay to rezone something for forty stories, just in case it's needed. That's not a good reason to change the zoning plan. Parcel C, we've only really seen pictures. I know when I was looking at something, when I was watching your your planning commission meeting the other day, someone actually had some plans before you. Uh, the pictures that we have seen have gone, the stadium has been on one side, the stadium has been on another side, nothing has remained the same. And so it's difficult to know exactly what's needed and what's going to be used. Next slide, please. The environmental impact, um, Bonner did talk about racial justice and environmentally, the citizens, the black citizens of Raleigh after reconstruction were pretty much forced to buy property in the areas where there were creek bottoms and less desirable locations because the antebellum or the plantation owners didn't want to live in those areas. They wanted to live higher and upstream from the dank areas. So those were the properties that they sold or rented to blacks. Um, and those people who were recently freed. So that has kept our segregated neighborhoods together in Raleigh because that's where people have been living for years. Next slide, please. This again is pictures of the FEMA flood plain, the um the footprint and where it sits on the Walnut Creek watershed. And um my house is on a plateau and our backyard used to catch all of the water until we had that mitigated. That's the kind of thing that will need to be done to keep our historic Rochester Heights from being continually flooded and not just Rochester Heights. Our the flood plain goes deeper into southeast Raleigh and the city is already looking at ways to mitigate that. Next slide, please. We've heard about a memorandum of understanding that Kane has talked to the city about and um that that would be uh something with the city. Uh, and even if the city, what the mayor has suggested is that the city would create a community engagement group. The people who really need to be engaged are not necessarily the people who would be nominated and placed on this committee by politicians. And um I I just think that the people who need to be talked to, they're working during the day, they're working during the evening, they're trying to pay their bills. There are there, there is going to have to be more reach out than to those people who supposedly represent the community. The community itself needs to be heard. Um, and I want to, um, I think we could probably skip the next slide, um, because that was talking about substantial substantial community involvement and I don't think we've had that. Um, the benefits that um, and you can skip the next slide as well. Um, so these are the kind of benefits that I have heard from the community that they want. And these are some of the benefits that I put in a letter from myself on behalf of PJ to Bonner Gaylord in um August or early September requesting a community benefits agreement and these um input for some of these types of projects. I will say that I hope now that we've heard from John Agnos about the um text changes that may be coming along about flood plains, that you all will hold this as as long as possible until you get those text changed um documents and look at them. The last thing we want to do is create a big project that does not have the the kind of things that he was talking about would be put into place to protect the community. The community deserves to be heard and protected. They pay taxes just like everybody else. And if the taxes are the money from the taxes, it's what's going to go into an equity fund, which is not the same thing as a community benefits agreement, then the community needs to be heard in terms of what they want. Thank you so much. Um, the last page has my contact information if anyone needs to get in touch with me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Coffin.
All right, um, next we is Tatiana Height.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Tatiana Height and I am the program director of a nonprofit uh called Partners for Environmental Justice that's been named a few times over the course of this evening. I would like to just start by echoing the concerns of some of the folks who have already spoken. We are in agreement that the parcels that don't currently have any plan should not be included in this rezoning application, such parcels or segments A and C. We are also in agreement that strong stormwater considerations need to be made and that community benefits need to be contracted with members of the community. Since the mid-1990s, PEJ has worked to advocate for equitable treatment of both human and natural communities in the Rochester Heights community, as well as the Walnut Creek wetlands. But unfortunately, it is our view that the Downtown South development will have adverse impacts on both the human and natural communities. And so thus, we are only able to support this project if considerations be made for the community, such as using the low-impact development and green stormwater infrastructure. We are very happy to see that those things are already being considered. We would like to just, a reminder to the planning commission that we did have a letter sent with Chris Bass with some stormwater considerations that was emailed on October 12. It outlines very specific requests that we are making in terms of stormwater. We would like those to be considered more specifically than just a brief overview of using the stormwater conditions that were explained earlier during this meeting. We are very concerned about increased flooding in Rochester Heights that would result as a, from the increased runoff from impervious surfaces. And we're also concerned about the potential to exacerbate the displacement and gentrification of longtime residents of adjacent communities such as South Park, Rochester Heights, Gilmore Hills, and other communities. Thus, it is our strong recommendation that low-impact development, green stormwater infrastructure, and equitable development all be considered through parts of this process. And just in consideration of the community benefits, it is very important that those things be considered now. We heard from some folks that we should consider a developer agreement in lieu of a community benefits agreement. But unfortunately, development agreements are only able to be entered into at the point of a site plan, which would be well after this rezoning has already been approved. So we would like to request that consideration be made for the community benefits as soon as possible and not after the rezoning has already been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Height. We appreciate your comment.
Next is Jane Harrison.
Yes, hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, hello, everyone. Hello, commissioners and neighbors. I live in the watershed of where this proposed development would take place. And I really just want to echo what I've heard from other neighbors and folks that are concerned about what this development would mean for Southeast Raleigh. And at this point, there needs to be a number of changes made before I think many of us could support this type of development. I'm a member of One Wake. This is an organization that represents over forty faith-based organizations, multiracial churches. And we have a lot of concerns on this particular development. And so some of the things that I'd like to see are that commitment to stormwater control measures, low-impact development, green infrastructure. That has to be made. Also, just looking at the Chris Bass engineering report and following what their suggestions are for the property. In addition, at least twenty percent of the housing must be subsidized for low-income residents. There needs to be a commitment to affordable housing on this development. And then a community benefits agreement is needed, as others have pointed out, before this zoning could be approved. It really, I'm afraid that if this was to be approved without some of those commitments made ahead of time, that we really won't know in the end what we will get. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison.
All right. And before this last speaker, this last speaker is the last I have who's signed up. If anyone else is on and wishes to speak, please use the chat function to let me know. So last, we have Trip Andragio. Trip. Perhaps we can come back to Trip in a couple of seconds. Also, Chair, I have members of the applicant team. If you wish to hear from them again, are willing to respond to some of these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mabel. It would be good to hear from the applicant to give them a chance to respond to some of these comments. So I guess if you're able to reconnect with the previous speaker, we'll just maybe pause and then hear him.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to address some, but not all of the comments that I'd like to address. I started keeping a list of the misrepresentations and, or misunderstandings. And it's too long. But I will say a few key points. There has been a discussion about CBA and a tax increment grant held with the city council and the county commission is, has been presented to us by the subject matter experts on this as the best approach. A true CBA is with a third-party community organization. And that organization has to have the capacity to administer this equity fund over the next thirty years. And there has not, while we've heard about CBAs and asked over and over, you know, okay, we're not averse to that. What is a group that we could, they could hold that CBA? And there has not been one group put forward as a potential holder of that CBA. And so with that, there, we have gone to what the experts have recommended, which is to rest that authority for the next thirty years with the democratically-elected city council and county commission that we can be assured will be democratically representative of our city thirty years in the future. And so that's why we've approached that way. We've been very clear about that from the very beginning. We have never said no. We have said we'd love to explore that. But as of yet, there has never been a group suggested that could administer that agreement for the next thirty years. The other misconception, I think, is that this, that sites A and B are going to be forty stories across the whole site. And that is what the staff's report said, which is why we added conditions that limit that density significantly on tracks A and B. And that, and we all know that height is a proxy for density. Height in and of itself only has impacts with airlight and privacy of shadows of people living in its shadows. However, height is often used as a proxy for density. And so we have limited the density on tracks A and B significantly below what the city's envisioned tomorrow projected in order to mitigate those impacts. Also have heard about that we're going to take this rezoning and run. And there is no way that a project even anywhere close to what we're contemplating could be built without an equity fund that would be used to deliver community benefits and create an entertainment and sports venue to use as an attractant and to bring people to the area. All retail, restaurant, office, and residential and hotel investors and builders look to the surrounding neighborhood's socioeconomic status. And all they care about is the dollars that are around the site because that is the mechanism that they use to determine their viability. And the surrounding, while North Hills would work because of the surrounding area, there is no way that North Hills could be built here. There is no retailer that would sign leases or restaurant because the demographics of the area are, have experienced challenges over the time in terms of their spending capacity. And so this is, without creating the entertainment and sports district, this project doesn't, is not viable. And we are entirely dependent on the equity fund, and the community's benefits are entirely dependent on the equity fund. We have proposed a memorandum of understanding with the council, and they've directed staff to pull, to get that ready for signature or to give them feedback on that and what that might look like, and a citizen engagement process to be associated with that, which will continue and amplify citizen engagement that we have already done. And lastly, I'll say that in terms of citizen engagement, we have been very open that we are willing to meet with anyone, anytime. And all people are the right people. To imply if I said that, which I don't recall I do, that I was thinking about business owners and politicians is a mischaracterization. And we have said to everyone, we're willing to meet anywhere, anytime. In fact, I had emailed Carmen Coffin exactly that a month ago and have not heard back. So we are committed to engagement. We're committed to everything that we've said today. And it's not just a pie in the sky. It's the only plan that we have to be able to deliver an amazing future for this neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Before we continue, Mr. Mabel, were you able to get the previous speaker?
Oh, I've since learned he was part of the applicant team, so. I think we're okay with that.
Okay, thank you. I did receive a chat request that one of the folks that spoke from the public previously would like to make some additional comments. If commissioners would like to hear from them. Seeing thumbs up and shaking heads. So if you would like to put them on the line, please.
Sure, that's, Bob, you can go ahead again.
Okay, yeah, Bob Geary, hello again. Bonner, I love you. One Wake is able and willing to be that organization that signs the community benefits agreement with you and is willing to enter into talks with you and other organizations, PEJ among them, willing to enter into talks with you about what the best community benefits would be. I don't think the best way to go about this is to, for you to talk to a committee appointed by the city council. City council will have its say, and ultimately, city council will decide what to do about this application. But a community benefits agreement should be negotiated with the community. And I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Geer. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate you focusing your comments on a new topic. We have another member from the public that spoke before that would like to speak again. Commissioners like to, yes, thumbs up on that. And I would just ask, like the previous speaker, you keep your comments to new information. Thank you.
Carmen, you can go ahead.
Thank you. The new information I wanted to share, because I did not want you all to have a misperception of what I said, was that Bonner did send me a letter a little over a month ago, after I sent him a letter and did not hear from him. I did not respond to his letter because I was waiting for the One Wake launch. Because until they launched, even though we had had conversations about them taking the lead, it was not my place to offer them as the group who would be willing to speak or to be the group for Kane Realty to work with. So I did not respond at all because I wasn't sure how to make that response not sound funky. So I wanted to let you all understand what had happened. And Bonner, I'd wanted you to understand that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mabel, are there, is that the last of the speakers from the public?
I have one additional one who has not spoken before. So that's Devin Ross. You can go ahead.
Hey, hi, this is Devin Ross. I'm an organizer working for One Wake. I wasn't planning on speaking publicly today, but I did just want to clarify Bob Geary and Carmen Coffin's statement. Bonner, One Wake would be glad to discuss a community benefits agreement and negotiating that agreement with you and with John Kane. We were planning on opening that discussion with you during our already-scheduled meeting next week. But we would also be happy to speak with you sooner than that, if that's helpful. And I'd be glad to work with you to connect you with One Wake leaders who would be glad to have that conversation with you if we want to have that earlier than our scheduled meeting. Thanks, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to have a moment to respond or address any of the additional comments?
Yes, you know, we absolutely have been speaking with One Wake and the folks who are involved with One Wake and are excited about working with them. We feel like that the city for a long time has not had a voice sufficient enough for those who can't be in the room or are focused on putting a roof over their head or putting food on the table. And so they can't attend meetings like these. And so we're truly excited about One Wake and what the opportunities One Wake offers. And so the answer is a resounding yes. We want to talk with you and hear you all's thoughts and have a dialogue. And that's the commitment that I make to you today. And it's the commitment that John and I made at the One Wake launch a couple of weeks ago. And so we certainly will continue to discuss. However, I would still ponder how One Wake, as a couple-week-old organization, would be able to administer a community benefits agreement for thirty years into the future in a way that would be accurate and representative of the community. And so I'm excited to hear a name for the first time and explore that. And also want to be honest and express the concerns that I would have with an actual CBA with a new group.
Thank you for those comments. So it sounds like both you and One Wake are interested in having some dialogue together. It sounds like we've gotten feedback from the public that they would like for that to happen. So is there anything that we can do here to help facilitate that? Is that something that you can all do offline?
Those lines, yeah, those lines of communication have been open for months now. And we've been, I've had multiple conversations with Reverend Javon Taylor and Amin Davis. And we are committed to continued engagement. I think we have, we have heard all of their demands, and it really boils down to three things or four things. A downstream analysis, which we are currently conducting, a green stormwater infrastructure, which we included in our condition. And then it also includes a substantial affordable housing and their specific request is a CBA or similar legal agreement. And we are pursuing that similar legal agreement, which is the tax increment grant and expeditiously in order to deliver affordable housing. So we're on the same So we're, we're on the same page. And we've already, uh, we're already working towards or have accomplished, uh, two of their requests and all have a definitive plan for the other two requests. So I, I, I do look forward to the conversation. I, I also, uh, would want to set expectations that I, I, I'm not aware, um, given the volume of conversation that's already been had of new issues, what, what it really comes down here is to trust. And we understand that there is a trust gap. And we understand that, that it's through engagement and transparency that we can amend that. I would, and it's also through partnerships, uh, with neighborhood organizations and businesses that accurately represent the neighborhood. And clearly that's beyond the scope of a, uh, of a land use discussion. But we are absolutely pursuing those and, and are, uh, are nearing, um, you know, partnership agreements and, and connections that we look forward to announcing soon.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so with that, I am going to bring it back to the table, um, to allow for questioning comments from the commissioners. Um, before we start that, I'm getting some chats, um, about the letter, um, that, uh, Mr. Bass wrote, uh, Chris Bass wrote. And I think I, Mr. Mabel, you said you could share that with us? Is that possible? I think there's, um, like just some clarity on, on that letter and what it entails.
Mm-hmm. One moment, please.
This is Travis, and, and just as reference, y'all have likely received a number of One Wake emails, um, today and last night. And the link is contained within those emails if you would like to look at this, this letter at your leisure.
Thank you.
Um, so I will scroll down to more of the requests, uh, part of the letter. If everyone can see that, make it as big as possible.
Thank you.
Yep.
And would also know if commissioners want to pull it up on their email. I have a note here that it was sent also October 12th from, and Amin Davis.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, yep, I'll, I'll give a recap too, um, as I scroll through. So under request section, number one is a, um, stormwater impact analysis. Um, there's a quality, water quality. Number two is about water quality. Uh, number three is about the, the volume, the level of storm that should be controlled for. There's more information about that. Um, number four is a downstream impact evaluation for different levels of sort of degrees of storm. Um, number five is just some more information about the, what the impact analysis and peak flow rate. Uh, six is, well, these are relatively short, but, um, pre-development, post-development comparison. Uh, number seven is requiring flood hydrographs. And then eight is some more specifics about, um, what is included in the downstream analysis, which, which streams. Um, and then number nine is U S G S data. And 10 is about modeling and CAD drawings. Um, so I will, I'll leave this and then there's that map. Um, if you want me to go back to anyone in particular, I'll also say you have about as much stormwater staff as you could want on this call. Um, in addition to Ben Brown, there are, there are others that I can unmute should, should Ben need them. But, um, Ben is also available to answer any specifics, I believe, about this letter.
Thank you very much. And, um, so we will bring it back to, uh, bring it to the table for discussion and comments. And it might make sense to, uh, if folks have questions or comments related to stormwater, address those while we have staff here and, um, able to answer any questions that we might have. Um, Commissioner Fox.
A question, um, for the applicant first and then first staff. Bonner, um, or if you have your engineer on the line, um, I'd be interested in knowing at minimum if you have considered, um, conditions that relate to the slide that Ben Brown presented.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you, Commissioner Fox, for a second. Somebody is, has their mic on and is typing and it's interfering with your sound.
Sorry, do you need me to repeat? Yeah. Um, a question for, um, the applicant, Mr. Gaylord. If, uh, if you have your engineer on the line or if you can address this, um, I wanted to know if you have considered conditions, um, that address the slide that Ben Brown showed.
Uh, yes, we, we, we have. I think the, uh, the information that Ben presented was, was some new information. And so I think we can, um, we can wrestle with that and, and determine the right way to, to approach that. Uh, at the same time, I, I would defer to, uh, an expert here. And if, uh, if Brian Purdy is, uh, able to be unmuted, uh, he would be able to address that, uh, from an engineering perspective.
Uh, we don't have Brian on the line, but I do see Andy from McAdams.
Okay, okay, yeah, Andy, that, that's great.
Okay. Andy, you can go ahead.
Yes, um, um, Ms. Fox, can you, uh, elaborate a little bit more on the question? And I think I'll be able to respond better to it.
Sure thing. Do we wanna pull up, um, Ben's presentation? And I can tell you the title on the slide. Um, specific case discussion zoning conditions, and there were three bullet points.
Yep, let me, uh, share my screen again. Is everybody seeing that?
Yep.
Got it. Okay. And, um, so sorry to have to ask you, I have to ask you to repeat your question and then I'll be able to answer it. So now I have this in front of me.
My, my question was if you all had considered including, um, additional conditions, um, to address these bullet points.
Okay, um, yes, uh, we feel that the condition that we have included to increase the, uh, percentage or, or increase the storm from, again, from one, one inch to 1.25 to 1.34 was, um, in response to making sure that we were, uh, doing above and beyond what the current code says.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, um, can I ask you a follow-up really quickly?
Sure.
So I know your, your current conditions do address some of these, um, but in the, in the sense of going above and beyond what's in the video, um, have you all been privy to the letter that we had pulled up as well?
I, I had not seen it, but I would like to state one more thing related to the downstream analysis, item number two.
Yep.
In that we historically, when our project is located at a significant stream and we would, uh, typically do a downstream analysis to determine, uh, if in fact we're creating a problem downstream, of course, and we're in process with that. Um, however, uh, we do know that with a significant watershed that we're, we're in, and Mr. Brown provided some metrics on what percentage of the watershed our site is with respect to acreage. And that our desire, um, is to do what Ben had guided us to do related to not detaining and instead, uh, not adding to the peak of the overall watershed. Uh, so that's the detention component. Um, so that, uh, will be verified and validated with a downstream analysis that's underway. But it's, um, it's gonna show that detention is beneficial, not detaining is beneficial, um, to, uh, keep, uh, the peak float from getting any higher. Uh, and I feel like that has been talked about already for item number two.
All right, about that, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, when do you, it's, it sounds like the downstream analysis is already underway. When do you expect, um, to have that ready?
We are going to provide the downstream analysis one week from today.
Commissioner Mann.
I have a quick question. I'd just like to, um, inquire and see if Mr. Benjamin Brown from the city had got a chance to read the letter as well. Um, I just think it would be valid if a member from the city, an expert from the city can validate all this stuff that's in the letter before we give it merit and before we hold, um, accountable the, the development team on something that the city hadn't made valid. So I just wanna make sure that Mr. Brown had a chance to look at that letter.
Uh, yes, I had a chance to look at it, um, as did the other stormwater staff that's on, uh, the line as well. Um, uh, the, uh, letter goes in far more detail than my three bulleted slide does here, but I mean, everything in it seemed sound from an engineering standpoint. I mean, I, I got the letter around lunchtime, so I will say I've only been looking at it since then until now, so. Does, uh, that answer your question?
Yes, I think, I just wanted to make sure that you, the city got a chance to see it before, um, we just gave it a bunch of attention, so that's all, thank you.
Just under the wire, but yeah, I saw.
All right, Commissioner Bennett, and if we could, um, remove the slide unless folks still want it so that I can see the commissioners now. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. Um, when Ben was giving his presentation, he referred to some changes that were pending. And I want to know, I, I wasn't sure if I followed. It sounded like he said this rezoning might not be consistent with some of those pending changes. And I just wanted a little clarity on that. I was trying to write it down as he was saying it, but I wanna make sure I understood that what we're looking at would in fact be consistent with the changes that are coming. And if not, then my concern would be that we're doing something for a rezoning of this magnitude before changes are coming that might, would require changes to the rezoning, if that makes sense.
Yep, that makes sense. Uh, this is Ben, again, sorry. Um, the, uh, um, the changes that I was referencing was changes, possible changes to the floodplain regulations for Raleigh. Uh, the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission has been working on for, for a couple of years now, um, some changes to possibly strengthen our, our floodplain regulations in Raleigh. And in, uh, September, the city council authorizes to start the tech change process. So, um, the planning commission will, will be officially getting that, uh, either at the end of this calendar year or at the beginning of next calendar year to, uh, discuss it, um, during their normal tech change process. But, uh, those, uh, changes would be pretty much no new structures within the 100-year floodplain that aren't already there or otherwise exempted. And there were a list of exemptions that were approved as well. And then also, um, uh, maintaining dry access for any new public streets that would be in the site. And not, and not necessarily knowing the site plan details for the site, I can't tell you if it's planning on being compliant with that or not. But, but a, uh, condition, as I had on my slide there, to, uh, have them adhere to the no new structure in the 100-year floodplain area could be something that could be added to kind of fit with that spirit of, of that order, ordinance change. But that is a potential ordinance change. It's not official or anything like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
And this is Andy Padiak. I'd love to give an opportunity for Bonner Gaylord to chime in with some additional comments.
Uh, thank you. So we, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize I'd be muted when I turned it over to, to Andy. Uh, the, we, we absolutely are, are happy to look at these, uh, these ideas and come back with conditions that address these components. So, uh, and, and, uh, we're happy to, uh, to give the planning commission the downstream impact, the downstream analysis that, uh, we are currently conducting, uh, at your meeting a week from today. So, um, absolutely, we're, we're willing to consider those potential conditions and come back with, uh, suggested language. And we are happy to, uh, to, uh, also address the upcoming stormwater, the upcoming Stormwater Management Advisory Commission's, uh, recommended regulations through those conditions as well.
Great. Any additional questions, comments, especially if they're related to stormwater from commissioners? Seeing none, um, Commissioner Miller and Mr. York, you have your hand?
Yeah, just, just a point of clarification. The, the special called meeting of the committee, the whole, is a week from yesterday, not a week from today. It's next Thursday. I just didn't want anybody to be confused. It, it is Friday today, so it's not a week from today, it's a week from yesterday.
Thank you very much. Um, Commissioner Miller?
Uh, yes, I wanted to, um, thank staff, uh, for providing all this, this stormwater information. And when I, um, was looking at Mr. Brown's presentation about, um, the stormwater recommendations, it, I, um, it's, it sounds like there are, um, then downstream analysis and some of the conditions that they suggested, uh, might be underway and available soon. Um, in addition, we heard from the public about concerns about low-impact development and specifically, um, flooding in the neighboring community and in Rochester Heights. And I was, wanted to see how, what type of analysis had been done around that.
Yes, that is part of the downstream analysis that you all will receive on, uh, the 29th. So, uh, we, we, that is underway.
Okay, I wanted, just wanted to make sure that that would be, that the neighboring communities would be included in addition to the other sort of traditional folks that we think of as downstream from, um, this watershed.
Yes.
Commissioner Lampman.
I just wanted to make sure that staff would have an opportunity. I know we could get the report back, but would staff have the opportunity to review it?
I, I think I have a follow-up question to that. Will we be receiving it on the 29th or in advance of the 29th so that we can review it? And as well as staff?
Uh, the, the team had committed to, uh, have it, uh, before your meeting. Uh, and I think, uh, backing it up enough such that staff can, uh, have time to, uh, review. Uh, I don't, uh, I'm speaking on behalf of the engineering team and I may be, uh, meaning some late nights for them. But, uh, I, I think that we can, we, we can make sure that we get that to, uh, you all in time for staff to review and in time for y'all to take a look. I, I, uh, uh, without speaking with them, I can't make a firm commitment of what time it will be delivered before the meeting. Uh, and we would need to talk with Ben about how to, um, how to make sure he has enough time. So, uh, we can, we can, uh, we'll wait, we'll do what, 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 whatever's, uh, whatever makes it work for you all and for staff to be able to review. So we'll make sure and we'll make sure that happens.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And we know it's a And we know it's a short turnaround. I do think that, um, what we're looking for is to receive it so that we can, you know, review it and, and feel like we're prepared, um, to understand what's in it. And it sounds like, um, I'm getting feedback from commissioners that this is a topic that's important to us. Um, so, Commissioner, oh, go ahead.
Absolutely understand, and, and we will, we will make sure that happens and, uh, make sure and get it to y'all.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Bennett, you were next.
Thank you. Um, when the report comes to the planning commission, will the public also be able to review it? So perhaps Chris Bass would have an opportunity to see it and react to it as well?
Ab- absolutely, absolutely. We were happy to, uh, share the, the impact of the analysis and, uh, going back to my earlier point, with, without complete transparency, there's, there's never going to be the trust that we require for this project to be successful. So, uh, absolutely, we're, uh, glad to publish that, uh, for the public. And in fact, when we send it to the city staff, it will be public. And, uh, so, yes, any and everyone will have an opportunity to review it.
Thank you.
This is Travis. I can, maybe I can offer a little bit of clarity on how we transition to the meeting next week. So we've heard, um, a request for additional information. The applicant has committed to submitting that and staff will work with the applicant team to get the information into us in a timely manner such that we can review it and then place it in our agenda management system, the board doc system, which is public and anyone can access that. Uh, we typically like to present and, um, upload our, our information with a few days' lead time before we have the meeting. So if you're meeting next, um, Thursday, it would be helpful if we could get everything in a, a few days in advance of that. So, uh, staff will work with Mr. Gaylord. I'm hoping he could lean on his consultants and have them get the work to us early next week.
Thank you very much for that. Um, Commissioner McIntosh, I think you had your hand up, and then Commissioner Lampman. Now you're good. Commissioner Lampman?
So this might be a question, um, for Stormwater Management. The proposed text change, um, I suppose that a lot of those, you might have some of those concepts laid out in a plan, but, um, you know, we won't know a final form until we get the text change. But is there any way to take the, as like a phase two, so when we get our report next week, would we be able to take that and compare it, how it will be impacted or how it will impact the text change? I know, I think this one would be grandfathered in, but how it might have an impact on other development down the way? I don't know if that makes sense, but maybe, maybe Stormwater can clarify for me.
Yeah, for this specific case, I mean, we could share the presentation that we gave to council or had ready to give to council on September 15th, if, uh, that would give more clarity. I hesitate to say about how future impacts are going to work because that's going to, that's going to be a decision, that's going to be a discussion for another day, I guess, once you guys get the actual text change. So I don't want to steal any of that thunder or anything like that, but, but, um, we could definitely share that presentation that we had for city council at their September 15th meeting, which is where they authorized it for, for, uh, text change.
When you review the report you get next week, will you be able to review it with, through the lens of that at all?
Um, as far as the downstream analysis report, that'll be a little bit different. Uh, the floodplain text changes is more about keeping like structures out of the floodplain. So, so any new structures. So the downstream analysis will be more about looking at what their proposed development could do downstream of their site, whereas the floodplain text change will be looking at their site and what they're allowed to do in the floodplain, if that makes any sense.
If the downstream analysis has, shows an impact, a hundred-year floodplain might look like with that, with that, we would be able to see something like that? And sorry if I'm confused, but?
In their analysis, um, it should show in, any and all impacts like that or no impact. It depends on what, kind of what the site shows, but yes, it should show that.
Okay, so then as a commission, we would be able to see the expanded floodplain? And then we would then understand that those areas of, would be impacted on, by future development because of the pending text change as well?
And, and I would, I would just like to add, just to, to maybe, uh, add clarity. We do believe we can condition for the prospective Stormwater Management Advisory Commission's suggested, um, recommendations. So, uh, we, we do feel like we can add a condition that incorporates the, those recommendations into our case such that the, the text change, um, you know, we don't need to wait on the text change to finish in order to include that.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Just wanted to add the, whenever the text change comes down, that, that is after the deadline to act on this project. So, um, so if there is a new regulation in the UDO that says there is no development in a certain area, that would apply to all future, even though this zoning went through previously, those new rules would apply to new development, not to development that has not yet started, but that has been zoned, correct? So the new project, any new development, yeah, so any new development that would occur, I'm, I'm guessing it would be reviewed either at site plan or, or something like that. So, um, all the new development would still be, even if they didn't add a condition during the zoning process, any new development in the future after the text change passes would be subject to these new regulations. Is that right?
That's correct. Once, uh, the unified development ordinance has been modified, as long as that happens before a site plan has been submitted, then those regulations would govern that site plan review.
Gotcha. Even if there's not, even if, so we don't have to guess what those are going to be and provide a condition in the zoning, they're going to be subject to them regardless as soon as the text change passes.
That's, that's correct.
Great.
But you did say as long, I'm sorry, sorry.
Commissioner Winters, thank you.
But you did say as long as the site plan had not been developed yet. That's the caveat.
That's correct. As long as the site plan had not been submitted to the city.
Okay.
Commissioner McIntosh?
How long, what's the normal turnaround time for incorporating new text change into the UDO?
Well, um, I don't know that we have any standard times. Obviously, the planning commission is part of that process. Um, y'all review every text change to the UDO and make a recommendation to the city council. So, uh, once staff develops the ordinance, uh, there's generally some internal review that happens. We'll place an ordinance on the public portal to gain public comment. That's usually a two-week window. Uh, then we submit the ordinance to the planning commission. Uh, this body has 90 days to review a text change and then make a recommendation to the city council. And the city council then holds a public hearing. So, uh, all told, you know, we could be a, a few months through the process, um, before the ordinance is acted upon. And once the city council adopts the ordinance, then it becomes effective based on the effective date in the ordinance. Many of our ordinances are effective, uh, between a few weeks and a month, uh, from the, uh, adoption date when it's acted upon.
And the reason I'm asking is because I think, um, when we were hearing about the development, they were talking about starting construction, um, next year, I think, um, probably later in the year, I'm guessing, but it sounds like, um, the timeline of when, just guessing from how they described it, that the timeline of them submitting a site plan and this new text change might kind of be happening concurrently, potentially?
Uh, and, and I would just, uh, reiterate that we're, we're happy to cover a both-and scenario, so, so we can add the condition that will ultimately be moot. Uh, however, it will be, uh, it will give certainty that we're going to abide by those regulations regardless of our site plan submittal timeline.
Um, I have a question, and I'm sorry, this may have already been covered, um, but I may have just missed it in my note taking. Um, the first item from Stormwater was, um, to treat all or a percentage of impervious using, uh, GSI. And, um, I think you mentioned that you're treating the first one and a half inches of, uh, rainwater. And I'm wondering if, does that, um, address, I guess this would be a question for Stormwater, does that address it in terms of treating all or a percentage? Um, are they kind of meeting that request with the one and a half inches? Or are you look, would you be looking for something additional?
Yeah, uh, this is Ben, and I, I saw the updated condition this morning as well, about the same time I saw the week one letter. I'd like to get with my, uh, review manager to talk about this because there's, um, we want to make sure the language would make, cover it being above and beyond kind of what our standard requirements are. So right now, I'm not really comfortable saying that if we've covered everything we wanted on that condition, to be honest with you.
Okay, um, so would you be able to, maybe once you can determine that, follow up with the applicant? Um, and, you know, I think that's, um, that's an item I would like to see addressed for a next meeting if possible. Thank you.
Yes, we will definitely follow up with that. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. So this might be something that's going to happen anyway, but in the event that it doesn't, I'll just say, it would be great if we could get the updated list of conditions prior to our meeting and not during the presentation. So we can actually see them and maybe they'll be published with the agenda, the public can see them, and that way people have had time to think about it and respond to them. But yes, this is great. You've addressed all of our questions, um, versus seeing them at the meeting and then having to react and us, you know, having to do it again.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lampman?
Um, I'm, I'm sure everybody teed up this week. I do feel, um, like it's a little rushed with some of the reports that we're requesting and having review time. Um, but I also, um, am interested in the, the TIG discussion. And, um, I know, I watched the council meeting, um, from, I believe it was Tuesday, um, where they discussed, uh, having staff go back and review, um, options for designing the TIG and what that would look like. And I believe that that is not due for another two weeks from that date. Um, and so I'd like to be able to look at that as well, um, in conjunction with the Stormwater. I mean, if we're going to, doing a lot of this at once.
So, um, and, and I, I would, I would suggest that, uh, that, that is going to be a long process to determine the right, uh, community engagement that's robust and, and significant. And, uh, so if, if we're waiting on, on that to solidify, uh, that, that's basically, uh, would put us into a position where, um, the project doesn't happen because there is a, a very, uh, as I've spoken with many of you all, uh, there's a, there's a, a tight timeline on this opportunity and, um, there, I, I, I feel like there, there needs to be, uh, some allowance for the, the city council to, uh, to handle their side of it. And at the same time, we're, we're absolutely open, uh, and that the only reason I, I wouldn't be able to, to commit to that is because it's out of our control and it, it rests with the city council. So, uh, we, we're happy to talk about it in, in depth and, and discuss everything we've learned and all of our, uh, all of our expectations out of this. And, uh, we, we feel like the city council has corroborated that. However, for the city council to make a decision on that before the planning commission decides on the land use, uh, is, would, would be, would essentially kill the project.
Commissioner Winters and then Commissioner Fox?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hicks. Um, I appreciate the situation you're in, uh, Bonner, um, in terms of timelines, but as you, as it was stated earlier about trust in the community, um, it has not been, it, it just doesn't exist, um, when we're talking about a project like this. Um, so there, I would say for me, it will take a, I, there need, I need more assurances, that's one. So the TIG is one part of it, the agreement is another part of it, the, the plan that's coming together, because this is, um, as beautiful as this is, as wonderful as this is, it's already, it's so vast and the impact that it will have immediately to the neighborhoods, to the historically black neighborhoods around it, uh, as well as the impact for generations to come. And, and with the timeline we've been given, it is a rushed timeline for such, um, an impactful decision. And when we're talking about, with this, there's a responsibility not only to the community, but also to the city as to what we're doing. Um, so while I appreciate the situation you're in, I'm not comfortable, um, rushing anything.
And, and I absolutely appreciate that. And, and we're, we're not trying to rush anything. Uh, it, it's, it's simply a, of transparency of, of where we are. And, and, uh, I, I think potentially what, what, um, maybe the, the only path forward, if, if there's a strong feeling that we need to slow down, would be to, uh, for, for, uh, for the city to even have an opportunity to decide whether this is an opportunity it wants to pursue, uh, and to preclude the, the planning commission from, uh, holding something such that it, that it goes away entirely. Um, if, if, if the pathway of a, a recommended denial based on those concerns, uh, is the pathway we have to pursue, then, uh, that's not obviously our desire. However, I, I think the, the team would prefer the community have the opportunity to pursue this, uh, even with a, a, a recommended denial from the planning commission based on the concerns that have been articulated. And so, uh, we're, we're, we're being as honest and straightforward and, and transparent as possible. And, um, we also understand that, uh, y'all have to sleep at night with your decisions. And, uh, if...
... recommendation of denial based on the, the concerns, uh, that's, uh, I think, given the, the community the opportunity to, to, to have this project happen is, is worth a negative vote, uh, for, uh, approval.
Well, I appreciate your comments. I don't think that we're ready to do that. I think we're at the beginning of the process of reviewing this case and gathering information and not quite ready to jump to the final conclusion of a approval or denial yet at this time. Uh, Commissioner Fox? I'm going to let Commissioner Fox speak for a moment, if I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hicks. Um, question for Mr. York or Mr. Crane. Um, can you, can you have a condition that requires a, a, another standalone legal instrument?
I defer to David. I think in general, the answer is it depends on what the legal instrument is you're referring to.
All right. So the question is that we, are considering that the community benefits agreement or the TIG are part of conditions, or are those standalone agreements? And, uh, recommendation would get to the end of this, would include, um, recommending that council pursue those in our report? I'm, I'm confused a little bit on, uh, the, the mechanism here.
Normally, if a condition references a, a separate document, it's a separate document that's under the control of the applicant. In other words, the applicant, a declaration of covenants, for example, would be such a document. That ha, that doesn't mean that council in the past hasn't approved conditions that reference an agreement with a party not associated with the rezoning. Those are problematic, uh, for the applicant. And so I don't... And so, I don't, I agree with what Travis said. I mean, to reference an agreement in the condition, the most common occurrence is when that document, that agreement, is something that's totally in the control of the applicant. And so, it's hard to do that, have it enforceable with third-party agreements.
I hear what you're saying. So, in this particular instance, do we have precedent for planning commission either denying or approving a project and then in their report, giving the, the reason that some standalone third-party agreement is required?
I, I'm unaware, I'm unaware of one. I mean...
Okay.
Commissioner Miller and then Commissioner Bennett?
Since, since we've moved on to the community benefit piece of this and the TIG financing, I, just as, I'm, I'm sure folks have, have read this, but sometimes I, just as a quick primer of, of working in public-private partnership or P3 financing for about 10 years, and so this type of financing, as, as folks probably know, would mean that the, that the tax dollars, that the taxes that this site would pay to the city and county would, instead of going into the general fund for each or their general allocations, would instead be sent to a special fund up to a specific dollar amount or for a specific period of time. And those funds would sit in a specific equity fund and be allocated to a specific area and for a specific purpose. So, it sounds like in this case, it would be allocated to the surrounding neighborhoods. And it's frequently for infrastructure or some other community projects and that kind of thing. And there was some talk about who could administer that and with, with One Wake and, and some other groups being put forward. And, you know, I think that we can really bifurcate the difference between who would administer that fund over the course of 30 years versus who should be involved in negotiating what those community benefits should be, like where those funds should be. And so, it, traditionally, it's the government that is the one that will administer those funds. So, probably, so keeping that with the city and county in order to, for compliance and making sure that distributions are made appropriately in accordance with the TIG agreement, probably makes sense from a fund administration standpoint. Having these other community groups involved in actually negotiating where those funds should go, I think is going to be a critical piece of that process. It has, and let me ask, staff this question, I think I know the answer. Has Raleigh ever gauged in this kind of tax increment financing before?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so this would be a new, something brand new for the city that would probably, would require some significant legal hurdles at the city and county level and probably undergo, as it, it does in most municipalities when it happens, significant public comment about sort of TIG financing generally, but then also where the money should go and whether this is the correct and, and right use of, of tax dollars. So, that, I, I guess it makes sense that we don't really fully understand what the process would be related to TIG financing and the planning commission's role in it because we haven't done it before. And so, I guess maybe that's the first question is, do we know what the planning commission's role might be in that TIG financing process?
At present, I don't know that planning commission has a role in it. So, it's a discussion that happens between a party and the city council because they're speaking about future financing and tax increment. Remember that the, the planning commission's charge is to review certain applications and you're doing so through the lens of the comprehensive plan. So, while I understand this, this conversation is fascinating, it's fascinating to me as well, thinking about possibilities and, and coordinating comments and people together to, to come together to one common agreement. It's tough to wade into that type of conversation as the planning commission, only because you're, you're typically reviewing rezoning requests in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
Right. So, in connection with Commissioner Fox's question, I guess as opposed to just putting in a requirement about a third-party agreement, putting in a requirement there be some type of tax increment financing associated with this project, would that be considered one of those third-party agreements that, or, or, or something, I guess it's not technically third-party because it's still between the government and the, the city and the county and the applicant? Is that something that we could include as a condition in a zoning request?
I'd be curious to hear from David here, but my, my question would be...
Normally, applicants do not add conditions to their rezoning request that removes their control to achieve and meet the condition. In the private sector, it's referred to as a poison pill condition. And so, if you, most applicants would not agree to a, whether you could do it or not, yes, but you're not likely to have an applicant volunteer a poison pill in their development. Usually, when it's done, it's done in a very limited fashion. We're gonna build, you know, five stories, but if I get this agreement with my neighbor, I have the right to go to eight stories. That, they're basing their decision on they don't need anything more than five stories. If the whole deal is contingent upon eight stories, they don't use that condition. You follow what I'm saying? And so, I would find it highly unlikely that an applicant would agree to a condition that they have no means on their own to meet.
That makes sense. So, I guess in this case, the way that would work is this might go through rezoning, and if the TIG financing did not work, then they would not be able to build this planned development on this project as, according to their own terms. And so, would have to build something else on this, on this land or, or hold it for investment for some later time. And if this additional condition were built into the zoning, then they might not be able to build anything, it sounds like. If, as, as opposed to being able to build something didn't require, from a business standpoint, tax increment financing. So, that might be part of the concern.
Commissioner Bennett?
I'm just trying to think.
I'm sorry, were you, were you done, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, I'm, I'm curious what other projects in other cities that have addressed the same issue, how they've dealt with it with getting the zoning through or a large project like this that anticipated tax increment financing and how to get that kind of assurance on the front end during the, the rezoning process about what this project would eventually look like.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett, you've been waiting for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a lot to say. I appreciate the primer on P3 financing and TIGs and tax increment finance, and that's definitely not my area of expertise. However, my area of expertise is equitable development and community engagement and urban planning. And I believe the reason why the community is asking for a community benefits agreement in lieu of this equity fund is because of what we're talking about right now. All of the legal haranguing involved with getting the city to, and county, I believe the county is also part of it. The, the process of getting them all to agree on something doesn't, first of all, doesn't guarantee the community is going to be included in what the benefits are that they get. So, I think that's why we've gotten all of these emails and we heard people speak about a community benefits agreement instead of what's being proposed. So, I understand what Bonner was saying about not having an entity to engage with. It seems like there is an entity to engage with now. So, I have, I do have one question about the equity fund that would be done with city council and the county commissioners. Is there any assurance that a new council or new commissioners couldn't come in and change it within 30 years? I mean, it's being made with one council that's not gonna stay there for 30 years. So, could they come in and change it? That's just one question, but I, I'm, I'm gonna finish what, what I had to say because we've been reminded that our role as the planning commission is to look at this from a land use perspective and to look at the comprehensive plan. And so, that's what I did. And we are supposed to make sure the rezoning request is consistent with the themes and the policies of the comprehensive plan. And we're also supposed to make sure that it's reasonable and in the public interest. So, first, if I could just look at the themes of the comprehensive plan, there are six. Economic prosperity and equity, expanding housing choices, managing growth, coordinating land use and transportation, sustainable development, growing successful neighborhoods and communities. The staff report notes that this rezoning is consistent with two of the six. This is a huge 150-acre development that has the potential to completely redefine South Raleigh. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but something of this magnitude, shouldn't it be consistent with more than two of six? So, is it that those were the only two it was consistent with? Or those are the only two that were just brought out in the staff report? Perhaps it's consistent with more. I would especially like to think that something of this magnitude would be consistent with number one, economic prosperity and equity, and number five, sustainable development. So, that's my, that's my comment if we're looking at the themes of the comprehensive plan. And then, if we're looking at the public interest, I don't know how we look to see if something is reasonable and in the public interest if we don't consider the public, if we don't look at the community. We have to look at the community around the proposed rezoning. I'm not convinced that that's been done yet. I've read the staff report numerous times. I attended the neighborhood meeting that the development team put on, and I re-watched it. I've talked to the applicant. I've talked to many people in the community. We saw in our presentation today, a very thorough presentation about what we might be able to expect. We saw lots of pretty maps. On not one of those maps did I see a name of a community. I saw Shaw, I saw other landmarks. I didn't see Biltmore Hills. I didn't see Rochester Heights. I didn't see Carol Lee. These, Carol Lee is on the National Register of Historic Places. It's a Raleigh landmark. I get a little concerned when we're talking about a development that could bring 38 million square feet of development and the communities aren't even mentioned in the presentation. Excuse me, but I get a little emotional about that. And then I'm told, oh, you're looking at the land use. Well, as a planner who's been planning for 25 years, I understand that the land use affects the people that live on the land. And if that's not what we're going to do in our role as planning commissioners, then I don't need to be a part of the planning commission because I'm concerned about the people. And I'm not gonna get caught up in talking about land use and legal instruments and technicalities if we don't get the same consideration to the people. This could be a fantastic development, but I want to make sure and I need to feel comfortable when I make a vote that the benefits and the burdens are not going to be out of whack. What I mean by that is I need to underst, I need to be comfortable that the people living there now are not gonna bear the impacts and all the negative consequences of this development while all the benefits are borne by people who don't even go there now. It needs to be an equitable distribution of impacts and benefits. I don't, however that's achieved, that's not for me to determine. But I need to know, I need to be comfortable that we're considering the people because we are tasked with considering the public interest. And for me, that's people. I also wouldn't mind having these themes in the comprehensive plan addressed because only two of the six have been pulled out as being consistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. I would like a chance for the applicant to give the applicant a chance to respond to that. Before we do that, I also want to be attentive to time. It's a little after 6:15, and we are scheduled to be here until 6:30. So, I wanted to maybe summarize some of the comments that, that I have heard today. And if I missed something, please interject. So, for our next meeting on the 29th, we can hopefully continue this discussion and maybe get some resolution to some of our questions. Additionally, you know, I, the applicant is, you know, curious, would we be interested in creating another special meeting in order to feel like we have ample time to discuss this? So, maybe we can talk about that after this. Okay. So, what I have heard is we would like some clarification on the three items that the stormwater department laid out for us in terms of conditions that would be above and beyond the UDO requirements for stormwater, which include treating all or percent of the impervious using GSI, downstream analysis, which I think we talked about extensively, more information on that. We were anticipating getting some information on that. And then also, more specifics and conditions on adhering to the proposed floodplain ordinances by CMAC, so that, you know, we, we feel like we have good representation of that. Additionally, some response to the letter from PEJ. We're looking for feedback on CBA, both from an administration, administrative standpoint and also from how that gets defined. So, the second one would involve community input from the communities that exist in that area specifically. That's a request that we're asking. Also, we would like to get some feedback from the applicant on their discussions or resolutions that they've been able to develop with One Wake. We'd like to, to see that conversation happen and get some feedback on that. We'd like more, I think, I know I would like a little more information on, on the TAG, TIG process and its implementation, what the city sees their role as being, how they will participate, and how does the public-private process work there? This is a topic I think that quite a few of us don't have expertise in. Specifics on equity, which I think goes back to the CBA, and some specific and specifics and conditions as they relate to affordable housing. And there was a myriad of possibilities that both we and the public had offered up as potential options. And then lastly, what I have is some information on, on how other cities have worked with the TIG and what that process looked like. Yes, Commissioner Miller?
Just wanted to add an additional question.
Just wanted to add an additional question. I know that the applicant said that with respect to the community benefit agreement slash TIG financing, that really all is, the TIG part is how to fund the community benefits. So those terms are quite, a bit interchangeable. But with respect to that TIG financing, that a memorandum of understanding has already been proposed to council, and that they have directed, and the council has directed staff to provide feedback and get that, a first draft of that memorandum of understanding for all of the terms related to that TIG community benefit agreement, ready for the citizen engagement process. And so I was, I guess, wondering procedurally if the plan is, it sounds like the planning commission is not involved procedurally in the TIG financing slash community benefit agreement process. We're just involved in the zoning process. But is the plan that the city council would simultaneously approve the rezoning and the TIG financing agreement at the same time? Or would, is it anticipated that that would also be done in stages?
Thank you. So I would like to, we don't have a whole lot of time left before we hit the 6:30 mark. I'd like to give the applicant a chance to respond to Commissioner Bennett's comments from before. You know, I think, I think this is a very large and inspirational project. I think it's also very complex. And so we have one more meeting as a committee of the whole on the 29th to review this. And I just wanted to get a feel for how commissioners are feeling about the amount of time that we have allotted to discuss this, and if there's any desire to add another special meeting and/or is it, I'm getting some heads saying yes. And also, I guess in terms of the timing, you know, is that needed? So I would solicit some feedback from commissioners. Commissioner Lappman.
I definitely think we need more timing, and I think that some of the other things to, I believe the genesis of this project was being approached to do a stadium. And I, again, I think I'm understanding that that, that particular, you know, soccer team may not be coming, or there's, maybe that's still up in the air, but I think that that's another example of how this, if we approve a rezoning, you know, already the concepts have changed based on those events. So it might be, and this I think goes across a lot of things, is that if there is a TIG and all these other components coming into it, but if it's still a moving target, it's going to be really hard to nail a lot of these down and make it appropriate for that area.
So I saw lots of heads going up and down, and I'm really going to try to keep this as close to 6:30 as possible. I know we, it's Friday night. We had a long day yesterday. So is there an interest in adding another special meeting in addition to the 29th? If there is, raise your hand. Okay. If you are not interested in that, please raise your hand. And, well, Mr. Mann's not on, Commissioner Mann's not on, or his video's not on, so if he's raising his hand, I can't see it. So that looks unanimous. So I think we need to pick a day. The second was, I think, a day that was suggested. Additionally, we could do Tuesday, perhaps Tuesday, the third. Do we need some, any feedback from staff to guide me a little bit here?
That's election day, by the way.
Right. So understanding your collective desire to have another meeting, what I'm hearing is the first few days of November. I assume that your intention is to have a meeting following your next special meeting on the 29th, but before your next regular meeting on the 10th. And so what staff can do is just send out a poll. We'll need to coordinate and make sure that we've got staffing available for you, and we'll, we'll give you a couple of dates and times to choose from.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate, appreciate that, both on the staff and, and also the commissioners. Appreciate everybody being willing to do that. So with that, it's 6:27. I would like to give the applicant a chance to respond. I think there was a request for that, and we're just trying to limit the amount of time that you speak so that we can finish up in a timely manner.
Yes, thank you. I thank you all for your time. I know that this is a huge commitment and a great sacrifice, and you're doing it on behalf of our community and for our community as I did. And so certainly don't want to in any way convey that we're not deeply grateful for your service and value your time. And we, we are going to huddle up as a team and come back with responses to all of the questions that are on the table. And I would also note that with respect to the comprehensive plan, I believe the staff report highlighted two components. The only two components where we're inconsistent is the, the height of 40 stories on track A and B, which is basic, which we have dealt with by conditioning down the density. And the other inconsistency was no housing on the southern portion. And we've not heard from anyone that they don't believe our, our city needs additional housing stock. And so those are those two inconsistencies, just to, just to be clear. But we will, we'll get to work. We'll get back with you. And we anticipate having suitable answers for all the questions that have been raised, and look forward to further discussion on the 29th, and hopefully at a subsequent special meeting as well, because we agree, this is, this is significant, and it needs community input. It needs vetting, and we're certainly not trying to get around that at all. But we are trying to be honest about the nature of the timeline and where we are. And so I hope that doesn't come across as pressure or, or trying to rush you all. That's truly not our desire. I wish we weren't where we are. I can promise you that. I wish we had lots of time to chew on this, and we will, we will give it the time that's due. And we understand that that's a responsibility, and we hear you loud and clear.
Appreciate that very much. So it's 6:30 on the dot. If the commissioners are, would like to do this, I, we can adjourn the meeting and continue our conversation on the 29th. I don't want anybody to feel like they've not had a chance to speak if they really feel the need or want to do that this evening. And I know there were lots of raised hands before, and I wasn't able to get to all of them. But I do want to give the opportunity to, if there's anybody who feels the need to speak now. And if not, then I would ask that you bring your questions to the meeting on the 29th. Okay.
Madam Chair, just if I may, before, housekeeping before you leave.
Sure.
So everyone who has signed up to speak either yesterday or this evening, automatically will be invited to the meeting on a week from yesterday, I've been told, because today is Friday. And we will, we will maintain that email list to notify if there are any other special meetings for persons we know are interested in the case. So that's just for everyone still watching who might be interested in continuing to participate.
Thank you so much. Commissioner O'Haver.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I sent an email, but I'm on vacation next week, so I just wanted to let, since again, we're not in person, we don't have a chance to talk to everybody. Just wanted to let everybody know. I love being involved in this. Everybody's doing a great job. Unfortunately, I'll be out next week, and just wanted to thank everybody for their service. So thank you.
Thank you for that, and we will, we'll miss you next week. Okay, then, if there's no further discussion, thank you, everybody, for your time. And thank you to staff. Thank you to commissioners, the applicant, and all the members of the public that participated in this important discussion today. And we will see you on the 29th, and we adjourn. Thank you.